Hello, hello.
There you go, you're on.
Hello, hello? I'm still on. Can you push it down? Hello, hello? It's off, it's off.
Okay, you're on.
Hello, hello?
Mine's on all the time.
Oh yeah, you're the mayor.
Yeah. No, but I know it's not on.
Test, test, test. There you go. Test, 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 test.
Ready for now, though? Okay, go for it.
Okay. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Housing Successor Agency and City Council Order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Mora?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez is present.
Councilmember Rodriguez should be here in about five minutes.
Okay. Mayor Protem Zamora?
Here.
And Mayor Rounds?
Here.
Public comments are, um, excuse me. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on closed session items only. For those that are here to make public comment, you will have an opportunity once the City Clerk announces your name. You have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do you have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers today, Mayor.
Public comments are now closed. I'd like to call upon the City Attorney to read the closed session item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. We do have a walk-on item tonight. This item came to the attention of city staff after the agenda was posted, and there is a need to take immediate action. City Manager, it's conference with real property negotiations.
That's correct.
So that'll be added as item number two. With that said, the report in the closed session is that the City Council will recess into closed session, all members being present to discuss conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation one matter, as well as the walk-on item, real property negotiations. I should also note for the record, Councilmember Rodriguez is not present. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now recess to closed session. We will reconvene the meeting after the closed session discussion to hear a report from the City Attorney and to continue with the rest of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, let the record reflect that Councilmember Rodriguez has walked in the room.
Hello, Councilmember Rodriguez. So you're just in time. We're gonna go in the back room.
I'm gonna use your method, honey. The lights. Put your water bottle right there. And then turn it.
Looks good, man.
How's timing? That the waiter even come mad at us.
What happened? The waiter was all mad? Oh, yeah.
At this time, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. City Attorney, are there any closed session items to report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. It's gonna be a long report, so if you could just bear with me. The record should reflect that the city council recessed in the closed session, all members being present to discuss the sole item on today's posted agenda, as well as the walk-on item. With respect to the first item on the closed session agenda, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, closed session authorization for this item is authorized pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and 549569E1. With respect to this item, the city council received a briefing from staff and the city attorney's office. No final action was taken in closed session on this item. With respect to the walk-on item, conference with real property negotiators, the subject property for this item bears APN number 8011-002-901902903, 8011-003-9552979. The agency negotiator for this item is the city manager. The negotiating party was Bridgeland Resources, and the items under negotiations are the price and terms for this particular property. This concludes my report from closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't paying attention. What was that? Just kidding, just kidding. At this time, I'd like to continue with the rest of the meeting. I'd like to call upon Cindy Jarvis to lead us in the invocation. Please stand.
He is a new creation. Old things have passed away; behold, all things have become new. 2 Corinthians 5:17. With every new year brings new blessings. In a time of uncertainty for some, we seek grace and wisdom on their behalf. As God provides, we're thankful for the many opportunities to give back. Today more than ever, there are needs to be met, mouths to feed, and homes to rebuild. Find a way to help without recognition. God honors a heart that serves without expecting anything in return. Seek out those opportunities all around you. Many will appreciate it. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the many blessings of last year and look ahead to this new year with anticipation. We pray specifically for our friends and neighbors who've experienced recent tragedies. Our hearts are in prayer for them and with them. Please cover our firefighters and first responders with the hedge of protection as they do your work in helping others. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Cindy. Councilmember Mora, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Place your hand over your heart.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah? I'd like to introduce the following representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. Wendy Meter, Curart from Tangram Interiors. And via YouTube, we have Scott Summerfield from Cascade Pump Company. Welcome, Scott. Item number two, presentation, recognition of holiday home decorating winners. I'd like to call upon Library Services Manager, Deborah Rea.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm presenting the winners of the 2024 Holiday Home Decorating Contest. The historical and community preservation advisory committee members rate the homes using four criteria: lights, decoration, heartfeltness, and extra effort. The top 12 homes receive a yard sign and a plaque. And we would like each winner to come to the front as their home is announced, and after all the winners are announced, we'd like a group picture with council, all the winners, and the committee members that are here tonight. Our first winner on Sun Glow Street with Salcedo's Christmas Wonderland theme is Marcus Salcedo, and unfortunately, he could not be with us tonight. The next home on Ringwood Avenue, the theme is just light, and the homeowner is Kathy Hindle. So, come on up and...
Congratulations. A lot of hard work that goes into this, but it looks beautiful. Great job.
Three, two, one.
The next home on Clarkman Street, the theme is Christmas, and the winner is Craig Piper, and he also was not able to be with us tonight. The next home on Sun Glow Street, the theme is Christmas time, and the owner is Matthew Martinez. He also wasn't able to be with us tonight. The next home on Broadbrow Avenue, it's Gingerbread Christmas. The owner is Shivani Londe. He was not able to be with us tonight. The next home on Buell Street, Nutcracker Christmas Joy. The owner is Nadia Macedo, and she was able to be with us, so...
Congratulations. Thank you, congratulations.
The next home on Idling Street with the theme of Mickey's Very Merry Christmas. The winner is Selena Figaroa. The next home on Longworth Avenue with the theme of It's a Whoville Christmas. The winner is Juan Galván.
Is it really a family affair, or is it Dad doing everything, huh?
No, they do a lot of it.
Cool.
They pick the theme every year, so...
Oh, they, oh, that's awesome. Cause he's here. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, there he is.
Three, two, one. There you go. Three, two, one. There we go.
Congratulations.
The next home on Jersey Avenue with the theme of Christmas Joy. The winners are Ruben and Margaret Garcia. The next home on Florence Avenue... The next home on Florence Avenue, the theme is Have a Very Special Christmas. Different is not less. We love and accept all of our challenges. The winner is Julia Lucero.
Do you want us to go down? We'll go down there.
The next home... It keeps jumping ahead. The next home on Clarkman is the theme Spirited. The winner is Elena Gomez, and she wasn't able to be with us tonight. And then the last home, it's on Albertus with the theme of Forest of Dreams. The winner's Christopher Vargas, but he was not able to be with us tonight. So those are our winners, so now we would like to have the group picture. So if everyone would please come back up, and the committee members that are here tonight who voted on the homes, please come up also.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, perfect.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
I'm okay. My, my house got fired yesterday.
Oh, okay. Yeah. You have another one cold. It's okay. We're fine. No, we're fine. You sure? I'm sure, no. Okay.
See, we can see yourself a reflection in the back. Wait. You got it?
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody.
Wait, are we doing industrial? Or, yeah, business?
The wheel came off. Come on, Fernando.
The wheel came off.
The wheel's on the bus.
Oh, we didn't have businesses? No businesses?
No, next bit.
Oh.
Okay, next, changes to agenda. Mr. Bobbidiya, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We do have one change on the agenda, Mayor. We'd like to pull item nine from the agenda, and I'd like to bring that back at a future meeting.
Okay. Public comments are now open. The public may address the city council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or on any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once the city clerk announces your name. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers today, Mayor.
I will now close public comments. Staff communications. Mr. Bobbidiya, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two. I'd like to call up our Public Works Director, James Enricus.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to announce to the council and the community of a grant that we received, notification of this past week. If you remember, in September, the council authorized application to the Federal Rail Authority to fund the initial study in preliminary engineering for a proposed grade separation of the Norwalk-Los Nietos grade, existing at grade crossings. And this past week, we got notification that the FRA authorized the full grant amount that we requested, which is 2.64 million. And then we're also partnering with BNSF Railway, who owns that rail. And they're also contributing 330,000 to the project, as well as the city has contributed another 330,000, for a total project of 3.3 million. And that'll pay for the alternative analysis for a grade separation, environmental clearance on a 35% design. And that would really put us in a good position once that's all completed to go chase some grant money for construction in the future. So in about two years, this design will be done, and then we can start applying for construction grants for that grade separation.
So realistically, from beginning to end, we're looking at about 2030.
This would be a two-year process. It'd probably take a couple of years to gather the construction funds, and then it would be another four, five years for construction.
2033.
You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah. No, that's well, and, and I know that on the Valley View separation, we were the lead agency on that. Are we gonna take the lead on this one? Or has that been determined?
So we are the lead agency. Of course, we'll have a team of consultants working on the project, and we're partnering with BNSF Railway, but we will be the lead agency.
Considering what happened in Marquardt, I would highly advise...
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, yeah, we had a lot of issues with that one, so... Thank you. Any other questions from council? Any other staff communications, sir?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to call up our Community Services Director, Marisela Valderas.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So in response to the Eaton fire, which destroyed two of the Lakata housing facilities in Altadena, 62 displaced residents were relocated to the Santa Fe Springs site. And the city quickly, we launched a donation drive on January the 9th to support the evacuees, gathering over five truckloads of essential supplies, which included food, water, clothing, and hygiene kits. The Santa Fe Springs Council and city staff, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to all who contributed to this effort, including Siaka, who donated pet food and supplies, Care for the Children, who donated refrigerated and frozen meals, and Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in Downey for their large donation in clothing and food. So we want to do a special thank you to Lakata for providing shelter and care for those that were affected by the fire. And this outpouring of generosity exemplifies the spirit of community in times of need. So just wanted to share with you, and there's some photos there in terms of what we did, and we still are still sending stuff to them. We're taking truckloads of our donations over to the Lakata site. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, I also wanna inform the council and the community, we did send fire crews to the Palisades fire. We also have crews that were helping the Eaton fire. Now they're assisting with recovery and assisting Eaton with, with that part of the, of the project. We also sent resources to Sierra Madre. We were able to send six PSOs to help Sierra Madre with traffic control and keeping some of the looters out of the area. In addition, Wider PD also sent resources over to Sierra Madre. And, and it's just a, you know, as tragedy hits, it could happen here, it could happen anywhere. And the fact that we were able to quickly on Tuesday send crews over and, and get help to where it was needed, and I know the, the community did an outstanding job of asking what was needed. And it's just been an outpouring of support, and we appreciate the residents of Santa Fe Springs and, and our staff, and our fire staff, and our police staff that on a dime went out to help, so, so thank you.
Sure.
Renee, on a technical question, do you know if our fire staff is, are they 48 on, 24 off?
Well, they started off 24 on, 24 off. And as the Palisades fire grew, they went on 48 on.
24 off.
24 off. So our guys are, the morale's good, but, but it's been a toll for them to see what they've seen. And the stories that they're telling of what they saw and what they encountered is, is just horrible. It's just, it's just sad to see. And I know our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Razal, he's, he's part of the National Guard. They deployed over 100 National Guardmen that volunteered to go out. Nick's not there yet, but they're out there patrolling the streets and keeping those communities safe. But it's, it's a, it's gonna be a big topic of conversation when it comes to emergency preparedness, being prepared, knowing what to do before, during, and after. And it's gonna affect us one way or another. And, you know, we need to have those conversations about how we can be ready for an event that can, can cause damage and destruction like that.
And just to let the residents know, we probably had about, what? One-third of our, of our...
About a third of our fire force is out fighting fires in other communities. And, and I do wanna assure the community that we do have resources to back us up with Downey and other cities, we're still protected. But that's the beauty of, of how we're set up and mutual aid and how we're able to help and still get the support to help us when we're not in full strength.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we'll move on to regular business. Item number three, resolutions. Amending certain rules for advisory committees and establishing rules for Citizens Oversight Committee for Measure SFS. I'd like to call on City Manager, Mr. Bobbidiya.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is the REZO that's amending certain rules for advisory committees and establishing rules for the new SFS. As you know, this, we rely on various advisory committees to support the city on initiatives, and they also provide recommendations to the council, and, and also it helps foster public engagement. So in order to align all these bodies and the vision and values and our resources, that's, that's one thing that's important to us is, is a lot of times finding the resources to make sure these committees are, are working properly and having the information they need to, to be able to conduct business does take a toll on staff. So the amendments before you aim to offer us a little bit more flexibility for our advisory committee members while optimizing the effectiveness of meetings. And I, I do wanna reiterate that, you know, the fact that we have so many volunteers that help us, it's probably the first community I've been in where we have so many volunteers that, that take time out of their own schedules to help the city. And that's, that's commendable, and our rules were a little harsh when it came to absenteeism. And I think this gives an attempt to establish rules that allow folks, if they have medical excuses, that can, can be absent without having fear that they're gonna be off a, a committee or a commission. So the report is before you, Mayor and council, and we, if you have any questions, we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? If not, do I have a motion for...
I'll move.
Moved?
Aye, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So ordered. Next, we move on to appointments to city commissions, committees, and external organizations. We're gonna first start with the advisory committees. And I'll call on each person. I think instead of going line by line, I'll ask a question if you wanna keep the same people on there or any, any alterations to them. So we'll count, start with Mayor Protem Zamora.
Are we doing historical?
No. Well, any, do you have any changes to any of the committees?
Where is it at? On my Family and Human Services, at this time, I only wanna appoint Gabriela Garcia back. Other than that, everybody else is, is the same.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mora?
So Family and Human Services, we're gonna just keep the ones that are on now. And... Also Planning, no change. And Gloria to Senior Advisory Committee.
Is that it?
That is it.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Are we doing the whole thing, or just...
All the committees, the... Well, yeah, for the city committees. If you wanna make any changes or just leave the list as is.
Okay, on the Historical Committee, I'd like to leave Elena Lopez Boca. On the Family and Human Services, I'd like to leave Elena Boca and Adrian Karnof. Heritage Arts, I'd like to leave Isabel Cervantes. Parks and Rec, I'd like to leave Isabel Cervantes, Lisa Garcia, and Priscilla Rodriguez. Planning, is that what you want, to go through all of these?
Yeah, you're almost there, so that's fine.
Planning, I'd like to leave Isabel Cervantes. Senior Advisory, it's vacant. Nobody there. Traffic, I'd like to leave Felix Miranda. That's it.
Okay, perfect. Next, Councilmember Martin?
For Historical, I'll put Gloria Mahame on it, 'cause I have three vacancies. And then I have for Planning, add Jay Sarno to my, as in Planning. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, I wanna leave everybody on there with one exception, and that would be to the Park and Recreation, I'd like to not appoint David Kurt Hamra. Okay. So that's for the advisory committees and commissions. Next, we have the council subcommittee, which we only have two. Capital Improvement Projects, I'd like to stay on the committee. Annette, are you still okay with being on that committee? Okay. What are your PD contract, myself? And do I have anybody that would like to... Okay, and Joe Angel. Joe Angel?
You certainly must have.
Okay, now, to the external committees. California Contract Cities, Martin.
Estee.
Chamber, YEF, Rounds. City Selection is the mayor, so that'd be myself. Alternate would be Zamora. Gateway Cities, Council of Governments, Zamora. I91605405, Zamora. I5 Consortium, I would like to put Rodriguez. And Martin as an alternate. Joint Powers Insurance, Martin. And myself as the alternate. Lakota, Annette, Rodriguez. League of California Cities is the mayor, myself, and would you like to stay the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay. Sanitation Districts is the mayor, myself, Rounds. The alternate is Zamora. The SFS, Santa Fe High School Education, Annette, are you okay to stay on that?
Yes.
And SASFA, Mora. Ciaka, I'd like to put on Martin. And Rodriguez as the alternate. Southwater Coalition Board, Zamora. Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG.
Do you have anything you want me to do? I'll do it if you- Yeah, you can do it, I'm good.
Okay.
Then I'll be your alternate.
Zamora, and Martin as the alternate. And Vector Control, I already have a four-year appointment, so that is myself. I think that's the last one. You know, the last one is the I5, the Oversight Committee, but the applications still have until the seventeenth. So I think we can do that at the next meeting.
So you'd like to wait until the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. To the citizens.
Because there are applications still, they still have until the seventeenth to apply.
Yes, we do have a, people that are interested are ready, they have submitted an application.
That would be my recommendation, unless people want to wait and make announcements, appointments tonight.
No, I mean, if you want to wait, I mean, it's only another week.
Yeah, we have, we have three names that will be appointed, that will be brought to you for appointment from the Chamber, which would be the three business seats, and then two residents would be selected by the council to fill the other two seats.
Okay, we'll put that on there, Jennifer, next.
Do they have extra names, just on the Chamber side, or just?
Names, yes.
Just only three?
Yes.
All right.
They did a vetting process, it's the three names.
Okay, thank you for that. And if I could make, well, first of all, do I have a motion for appointments?
I'll move.
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. One thing I'd request is a lot of these commissions and stuff that we sit on, staff gets involved, external organizations, so if by chance you can't make it, or know you're not going to be able to make it, and there's an alternate, please get ahold of Fernando or the alternate, and let them know you're not going to make it, and see if they're able to make the meeting. That'd be greatly appreciated. Okay, next we go to the consent calendar. We've pulled number, item number nine from the calendar. Do I have a motion and a second for items-
I'll move.
Excluding item nine.
I'll move five, six, seven, eight, and ten.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Now we go to council comments. AB 1234, council conference reporting. Councilmember Mora, do you have anything to, any comments?
No conventions, conferences to report. My only comment is, you know, back my old favorite, the Christmas float, it was alive and well, a lot of support from the Park and Rec Committee and the Subcommittee. We were able to bring Christmas joy to so many people, including one of the biggest tree lighting that we've had in a long time. So our, Gus and his team do, always do a great job, so I want to just make sure that, you know, I did a shout out to them. And also, you know, these fires, I mean, they're devastating to everybody, and I know that it's on everybody's mind right now, but, you know, I'm just hearing the outpour, not only from our community, but surrounding communities, to a point where we had to stop, a lot of places stopped taking donations, because people are just so generous. And of course, it's always an offset with the looters, which is not nice, but, you know, hearts go out to all firefighters, especially our own, our own PSOs that are out there, and just keep those people in prayer. They've lost their homes, they've lost so much, but I appreciate, you know, our police and fire for doing everything they can. And with that, just have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I'd like actually to report on AB 1234, council conference. Myself and Mayor went to the Sacramento Legislative Tour, and not just our city, there was 125 other elected officials that are representing their cities, and their main issue and their complaint was homelessness. They're upset, and I mean, thank goodness, we don't have the problems that the other cities did, but all the money going to them, all the taxes going to them, and there's nothing being done, and homelessness gets worse and worse. So a lot of the cities stepped up and spoke their mind, and talking, we talked to the legislative people, we've talked to Assembly people, we talked to senators that were there, and they really don't have an answer. They really can't tell you what their money is going to, they really can't tell you what the funding is going to, but they're just saying that every city needs to do their part. And it was very frustrating, because we are doing our part, all our cities are doing our part, and everybody's frustrated, because no one could give answers of where that money is going to. There's no support for our law enforcement, there's no support for our fire, and all they could tell you is, keep doing your job, you're not doing enough. And the sad part is, is we had, we had meetings from eight o'clock in the morning until maybe four o'clock every day for two days straight, and I would be lying if eighty percent of the time that we went, and all the classes or the speakers that we spoke kept telling council members, you're not doing enough, you're not doing your part. Not once did any of these people said, we need to do more on our part. So it gets very frustrating, so I would like to commend other council members and our residents for doing their part. It's so, it's frustrating knowing that in Sacramento, they're not doing their part. So, but we're trying. Regarding, we actually had a meeting with Ron Banta, and he straight out told us that we're doing not, we're not doing enough for housing, our city's not doing enough. So when we brought it up that our lands are contaminated, it costs millions of dollars to fix, and we don't have that money, his answer straight up, we'll go to the oil companies. Well, the oil companies is over a hundred years old, they're not here anymore. And it was just frustrating, they don't want to help you, they do not want to help, and it's very frustrating, you going over there and trying to make a stand for our cities, and they're not doing that. But on another note, we talked to Senator Archuleta, he actually wants to help us with also, I think, three other cities that's in his district, so we can do certain exemptions, so we can build on our land, so they can give us monies to fix it. So hopefully, I mean, Archuleta's always come through for us, and hopefully he'll come through for us, for that as well. A big thing also was mental health for our fire and our police, especially our police department. There's more deaths of suicide in our police officers than there is any other death, and that needs to change. And so they're doing a lot more legislation, there are a lot more support for our officers, so hearing that, we need to step it up on our part to thank our officers, thank our fire for what they do, because what they see, they come home with every day. So we just need to do that more for our fire and police. Bill, could you think of anything else? That's one of those we covered in our meetings over there.
Well, I'll give my first part of, but, so, no, I was in the same meeting as the councilmember Martin, and when, it was funny, when Attorney General Rob Bonta was there, he's not very liked, very liked in the, in the community there. I mean, I'm lucky that if people had tomatoes, I think they would have thrown them at him. And he wouldn't make eye contact with anybody, he was looking up in space, and, you know, it was very evident where he stood. And in fact, there were people in the audience that had white knuckles, because they wanted to say something so bad, but they had enough class not to say anything. And then, in talking about the homeless, people brought it up. What about Norwalk Metropolitan State Hospital? The state owns all this property, the state's telling us we got to do all this? They got it in our backyard, why don't they do something there? But nobody had an answer. None of the legislators up there, senators or Assembly people could answer that question. So that's something, I don't know if we could start something going forward, a petition or something, and send it up to the state? I don't know, but we, they got the land, let's utilize it. And, and one other thing is, the whole child, February first, they're opening it, so Santa Fe Springs is doing their part. We're doing our part to help the homeless, the families, the single parents and that, and putting them in a facility where they can get help. So you should be proud of Santa Fe Springs and what we're doing, and also another project that the county started, Pathway Homes. We're doing our part, great job, Santa Fe Springs.
One more thing, Prop 36, it's actually turning around. People are finally standing up and saying, hey, we need to stop all these looters, we need to stop all these people robbing, and now with the new DA, it should change. So a lot of, lot of council members are backing up to redo Prop 36, so it was, it was an informative conference. On another note, I'm trying to think what else we did. Everybody's doing so much, our city has done so much for Santa Fe Springs and donations. I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw out, Cindy, I'm gonna kind of put you on the spot. I got asked to do some, also some donating and stuff to some, some people actually in the, in the fires, and there's so much, again, they can't take anymore. Well, Cindy got a phone call today, that a lot of the schools have burned down. Well, one school's actually, seven schools burned down in the area, and in Pasadena, they have abandoned schools. So one of the Pasadena schools is actually going to open up for kids, an elementary school?
Junior High High School.
So they're asking for donations for the classroom, because there's nothing, they got four walls, that's it.
School supplies?
So it's, yeah, so school supplies. We don't know exactly, so if you think of anybody that still wants to donate monetary-wise or school supplies, Cindy, I'm throwing you out there, is it okay if they reach out to you?
Reach out to me directly, because I just don't have the list of exactly what they want yet. We don't want to give them things that they can't use.
Perfect.
But it is pencils, pens, paper, notebooks, backpacks, lunchboxes, and then of course, with Tandram, I'm work talking with Wendy about furniture, whiteboards and things, they're building from zero, from nothing.
And then we'll go, and then we'll, you'll deliver it?
Yes.
Perfect.
We can make that happen.
Yeah.
I got a bomb strike.
We'll make it happen, so, and, yeah.
And a bike.
And a bike. But that's it, thank you so much, I'm back, I'm glad to be back in council, so it looks beautiful, thank you so much, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Zamora?
When I look in. You want to do them first?
I forgot. I forgot you, I already had you checked off.
You forgot me.
Please.
You forgot me.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
That's okay, Bill.
Never.
I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I'm glad to see everybody here, but we haven't even been apart, we've, we just seen each other last week at our senior dance, our New Year's dance, it was great to see everybody back there dancing around, and I just have such a great time with all of you. I just wanted to say too that LACADA, I am the Vice President of LACADA, I've been a member going on eleven years now.
Yeah, you-
And they serve the community, and they serve it well. Mental illness, addictions, homelessness, anything that you could think of, these people do it all, and they've grown significantly since I've been a part of the team. Two of their facilities had burnt down, I didn't know what to do, I called our Mayor Protem, and he says, you know, just see what we can do, call Renee and Marisela and Nick, and let's see what, how we can put something together for them. And I told him I would, and I did. Within minutes, Renee called me and told me that we're putting, we're gonna put a donation out there on social media, asking for contributions, because there's too many displaced people, and they're back here in our city. Remember, LACADA started in the seventies, and nobody wanted a facility like that in their neighborhood, but Santa Fe Springs allowed them to come in and serve the community, and neighboring communities as well, because they're all over the place now. I just can't thank you enough, I was at the GVNC today, I was invited by our, our staff to go take pictures with, with our, my peers right here. I could not believe how much you have donated to LACADA. It has brought tears to my eyes, I'm just so happy to see our community come together in the faces of, of tragedy. You know, people have been displaced, and I can't even imagine, my home is a little tiny home that I love, but I couldn't even imagine not being able to go home there, and the little bit of stuff that I have, I don't know where I would go, you know, we would all be displaced, and we can only imagine what all of these people are going through. It's a very, very difficult time, it hurts to even turn on the TV and watch the news, it's just so difficult, takes a lot of energy out on, on all of us, I know, all, everybody's sitting here. And I just can't thank you enough for everybody. Gloria Mahame's house got a little taste of the fire last night, she has a hole in her roof, so if there's anybody that can help them fix whatever they have broken, and our hero here, Isabel, was, we're thankful to have her, she called 911 and got those firefighters over there. I want to thank our firefighters, I want to thank all our police officers, we can never repay you for everything that you've done to help us. You have put sixty-two people, you have given them so much, the people at LACADA that are displaced right now. They once had a home, they lost everything, and you have given them back, they have faith, and I want to thank you so much, from the bottom of my heart, because I don't know what they would do without us, we all pulled together in the time of need, and that's what everybody says on the news, is the love that we have for our neighbors, we've, we've done so well. It's just about love and giving back and being good to each other. My daughter Priscilla broke down last week when she seen everybody come in, she, it was very bad for her, and I was there, and I told her, you know, Juanita mentions mental health and homelessness, mental health, finally, it's being recognized for everybody, not just people with addictions. Mental health is very important, and now we're getting the, the resources to help everybody. So I just want to say thank you. We, we are just so thankful to have you here, we love you so much, and thank you to all our staff, and everybody that's here to help us and lend a hand, and be our brothers and sisters and our neighbors. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Just to echo what everybody has said, you know, our hearts, you know, they're heavy hearts, because you see the devastation, and, and, you know, we're fortunate to see it only on TV, and imagine these individuals that have to see it up close. You know, I know that our firefighters were, at one moment, brown bagging it, and some of the locals found out, and started making them steaks, and making them good, proper meals, just so they, they knew that, you know, they had nowhere else to go, they're going to be there, and so it's, it's good to hear that, you know, our fire department is being taken care of and appreciated out there, because, you know, you figure, you have forty-eight hours on, and imagine your mental capacity there. I mean, we talk about mental health, now imagine the risk after, when they come back, because those things that they've seen, they're not going to be unseen after that. You know, that's always going to be imprinted, not only in their hearts, but also in their minds, I mean, you think about the, the constant, you know, nightmares about it, and that's the difficult part. People go through these things, and, you know, you just, you know, you just pray, I mean, you know, we don't know why, I mean, it's just one of those things that, you know, for once, you know, for a reason that God just has us here, and just, you know, and, you know, that we just have to get closer to Him. At the time when the fires took place, I was actually out of town, I actually went to a conference called CES in Vegas, and it's an electronic conference, so it was interesting, because a lot of the talk, of course, started being about the fires, and you started, you know, you started looking at the EVs, so I went out there just to, I went out there on my own and with the other friends, and just wanted to see it, to see what, what can come back to our city. And, you know, some of the EV things that are happening, it's just, they're constantly changing though. It's, you know, I saw a drone that wasn't just a drone anymore, a small-sized drone, this is a two-man drone, and with the vehicle that comes with it, so I'm pretty sure our city would love that, but I mean, you think about the money, but, so you see all these different things that we can- But I mean, you think about the money, but, so you see all these different things that we can actually utilize. And, you know, and, and it's just good to see. You know, it's good to see the, the technology and just the fact of how many gifted, you know, Americans, or, you know, people that come into our country that just want to contribute. You know, it, it's, it's just great to see. And, you know, they have so many different, different electronics that just, I mean, I think there was people, I think every country represented at this conference, so it was just great to see. Other than that, talking to the individuals, they, a lot of people were bashing our governor, of course, and just bashing the way how things were handled. And, you know, it, it was just sad to hear all the different things, just watching the news, talking to different residents that needed support, you know, just pointing them in the right direction. I'm pretty sure we all, you know, did the same thing. So kudos to everybody, just the staff, our fire department, our police department, just everybody as a unison, just coming together just to do, you know, God's work. So, you know, thank you for that. You know, it's, when we talk about homelessness, we do have a meeting, actually, this Thursday for the COG. Then we have another meeting that, on Tuesday, and that Tuesday meeting can get a little squirrely, just because of what we're trying. I mean, and for the last few years on the COG, we've been, we, we took our, our step differently. We, we did our own thing. We, we have 27 cities that represent our region. And we pretty much did something that the county didn't want. We pursued mental health, drug addiction, and they didn't want that at all. I mean, they pushed back heavily, but now we have the other COGS that are following our model, and, you know, trying to do what we're trying, you know, what we're doing. So something that we're also looking at is our younger, our younger kids. Because once they age out, when they're 21, most people don't realize, I mean, you guys started looking at a lot of young kids who were homeless. Well, imagine the system, the system failed them, because when they turned 18, it could be March, April, January, but when they turned 18 and they were in a foster care system, well, what happened to them? They got removed, they got kicked out. Well, guess what? They became homeless. Somehow, our county system failed them, didn't see that. And it, and it was a fight. It was a constant fight to make sure, I mean, our Department of Children and Family Services, we have a, a young lady by, her name is Jennifer Lopez, that's her real name. You know, and it, it was a fight to make sure that our kids, you know, our kids were not forgotten. And we were able to fight and move the age range from 18 to 21. But still, i- it's still difficult for them, where do they go? So what we're trying to do now is we're trying to put our money to help them in housing, whether it be, you know, not only housing and residential, but also, also look at college housing for them and pay it through that. So those are the steps that we're trying to take, you know, as our COG, just to, just to let you guys know. And, you know, I've been on the phone with Hector Delatorre. He's kind of like our Renee, but for, for the region. And he's been, you know, it's been a fight, because we've been fighting, you know, just with different entities that want the money for themselves. And we want to make sure we get our fair share. There's been different fights that they say, they've talked about the, our neighbor, the city of Norwalk, that the city of Norwalk, you've probably heard the governor say, that they're not doing their part. The city of Norwalk has probably done more for how, for homelessness than probably any other city around. You know, it's just one of those things that, and when you have the governor say these things, you're like, you know, why are you saying this? And this is the pressure, this is probably why you guys felt that, that they're like, they're never going to be satisfied. They're not, they're not helping us with any, with any money, but yet they're going to always talk bad. You know, so, I mean, I know, and I'm glad, and I'm grateful that the city of Santa Fe Springs does their part. But just on our corridor, when we have the city of Whittier, Norwalk and Santa Fe Springs, everybody steps up, and it's good to see Downey stepping up. So just around us, our little region is doing their part, so it's good to see. So overall, I mean, I know Christmas, we had a great holidays there. January was wonderful, so, you know, it's great to see everybody, just God bless and may. God always blessed this beautiful and wonderful country. So take care, have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Before I give my final comments, I'd like to turn it over to Renee Bobadilla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I introduce our newest member of our team, I'd like to thank Public Works. This room, over the holiday break, these guys came in, they took out the flooring, they redid the dais. These guys did an amazing job. We repulsed their chairs, we kind of reconfigured the dais to have more room. It looks a lot spazier, just so you know, we only lost four chairs. So it looks like it's roomier, but only four chairs were lost, but we added more ADA access. So this is part of the newer configuration, we're, we're going to add ADA ramps as, as we go. But we had a chance to, to do something during the break. We, we took care of it. And so I want to thank them for, for all the work they did. They worked tremendously hard, and up until today, they were still trying to get all the kinks out. And we had one screen that broke, and it was two cost seat exchanges, we had to get new TVs, and these guys took care of it. So kudos to Ebo, his team, and everybody else that came out here. Thank you. I'd like to introduce our newest member of our team, our new Police Services Director, Ms. Arlene Salazar. And I'm going to read your bios, it's going to take a while, so before you stand up, let me, let me read it real quick. So Ms. Salazar has an impressive professional background in the public sector. She holds a bachelor's degree in organizational leadership, a master's degree in business administration, and is a recipient of several certificates in event management, grant management, transit operations, disaster preparedness, and human resources best practices. As a highly skilled executive-level manager, Ms. Salazar has proudly served in various leadership positions in her 30-plus years of municipal government experience. She started her career in 1990, when I was still a toddler, with the city of Norwalk in the public, in the Public Safety Department, supervising and coordinating the development of community-based anti-crime and neighborhood services programs. In a supervisor capacity, she was responsible for hiring and supervising staff and preparing budgets for public safety officers, co-enforcement, parking enforcement, park safety, overseeing contract law enforcement service, billing, grants management, and implementing youth anti-gang intervention and prevention services. The diversity of her experience in Norwalk provided her with the opportunity for the professional growth, leading to increasingly higher-level management positions with the cities of Chino, Downey, Peak River, and most recently, she was my Assistant City Manager in the city of Montebello. So we're excited to have you as part of our new team. Welcome to Santa Fe Springs, and come on up and say a few words.
Thanks, Renee. Sit down. I think so. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, thank you. It's been a amazing fifth day today for the city of Santa Fe Springs. It's been amazing, and I really appreciate this opportunity to come and really learn from what, the amazing stuff that staff's already doing, and also to be able to contribute to making this a better place to live and work and play. So I'm really excited to be here and, and have the opportunity to meet each and one of, every one of you, so we can talk a little bit more about how you see us moving forward in police services. So thank you for the welcome. I mean, I'm not that old. I started when I was 18.
So Ms. Salazar is, is very accessible, and I know she's trying to learn the city, the residents, so please, reach out, come by, visit her, have a cup of coffee with her. She's having trouble finding good coffee, I understand. But she's, she's taking care of that. But we, we're really excited to have you here and just bring a, a fresh set of eyes to making our public safety area stronger and more efficient, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, Arlene. Welcome. Hopefully, this is going to be the best city you've ever worked for. I'm sure it will be.
Two weeks in, and she came back.
Two weeks. So I just need to announce that I did attend a conference, as already stated. So it's already been given, I don't want to go over that again. But it was a great conference, and it's just good to know that we share the same issues, problems, as all the other cities. But it's the people up in Sacramento that just, they don't want to really help out with us. There are a few that are up there that do, but they're outnumbered. So we got to figure out how to change that. What does everybody think about the room in here? It looks pretty nice, huh? I can't believe it, it's so roomy. And hopefully, some of the people are normal people that come to the meetings, you're able to find a chair fairly easily, not get disorientated. Now you're going to get a different view of the council meeting, so thank you for that. Happy New Year, everyone. It's 2025, it's already here, almost half over. Hard to believe, the days just go by so quick. So I do want to just send out the prayers. I know everybody here feels the same to all the fire victims, and now to the people that are helping out, that donate, donating and all that. Prayers to them too, for being so generous. With that, I would like to close tonight's meeting in honor of, in memory of Kara Murray. A meeting adjourned.